For a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to be held on Monday, October 19th, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers at 301 South Fifth Street, will now come to order. Please rise for the invocation by the Reverend Brian Sharp of Grace Christian Fellowship Church and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you Reverend Sharp.
Thank you for the honor and the privilege. I was kind of looking forward to jumping rope here, but took care of that. Let us pray. Father God, we thank you so much for this evening. We thank you, Lord, for your presence, Lord, without which we can't accomplish much of anything that's worth anything. So we thank you for your presence here first. And Father, I thank you for this council. I thank you for the role that each and everyone plays, Lord, and I pray your guidance and your blessing upon them. Father, may their thoughts be your thoughts and their actions be your actions and their decisions be your decisions. And Father, we thank you so much and we thank you for this city. We thank you for the things we can do, Father, to share our love and our appreciation for our city. And Father, we also love our country. And Father, we lift up the election, Lord, and the many, many issues that our country is facing at this point. And Father, you know what they are. And Father, we pray that you will help us all, every one of us, to be a part of the answer and not a part of the problem. And Father, we lift up the election that you will lead us and God his Father as we vote. We pray that people will turn out to vote and we pray that we will vote according to your values, according to your priorities, Lord, because we know that if we seek your kingdom first, all these things shall be added to us. We thank you, Lord, for your love, mercy, and grace. It's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Please join me. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parson?
Here.
Councilwoman DeGerris?
Here.
Councilwoman Horton?
Here.
Councilwoman Cornman?
Here.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Mayor Smith?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you Clerk Young. Disclosure of interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I will need to be excused on workshop item one.
Thank you. Item six, citizens input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. First I have Sonia Ellis. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sonia Ellis. And what else did you need?
Your address.
Address 2067 Tumbleweed Trail, Papa Bluff, Missouri, 63901. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is Sonia Ellis and it took me a while to get here, but I am here. And what has brought me here is I am frustrated at what I'm seeing on the streets of Papa Bluff. Where I'm coming from is Germany and in Germany we have a strict rules when it comes to the way we take care of our environment. I know I cannot compare Germany with Papa Bluff. I realize that, but it really, really does concern me that I am seeing USPS trucks, school buses, FedEx trucks, and normal citizens vehicles putting out black gases out of their vehicles and just it's, I just, when I see that, I hurt inside because I worry about our environment very much. And I was wondering if there's anything in place that we are doing to kind of control that? Is there possibly a talk about maybe controlling that? Is there something that we can do? Is this against the law? I haven't even looked into it. I just know that it's horrible and I would love to see something done about this. For example, in Germany, if you are seen with driving a vehicle where anything black is coming out of your vehicle, you're being reported and you're being stopped on the spot. You can't even drive your vehicle to the next service station. And I just, I'm just wondering, are we doing anything about this? I'm very worried. I'm also here about political signs. I'm sure you've heard about political signs being stolen and demolished. People obviously, I mean, I don't know if it's coming from the, from both sides. I just know that my sign was stolen. I've heard from many other people that their signs were stolen and demolished. Someone is going onto people's property, private property, is not worried about getting shot, hurt, or anything, or reported. It's happening during broad daylight at night. Whoever it is is very bold with it and doesn't seem to care. And I'm wondering, is there something that we're doing about this? It's happened in the past, prior elections, yes, but never to this extent. People are outraged. Our rights are demolished, just done away with, and it seems like the bad guy is getting away with doing the bad things to our rights. Where does this stop? You know, because if we're allowing people, maybe even young boys, we don't know what age they are. If we're allowing these people to get away with it, where does it stop? What are they gonna do next? What are they gonna do after the election? Because we haven't tried to stop them. We've called the police, but nothing has been found out yet. It's pretty much on the person themselves to find out who's done it. Masking plans, do we have any plans for the fall and winter for Papa Bluff when it comes to masking? I'm seeing a lot of people not putting on any masks in public, talking to each other like really close, and I'm terrified when I see it. I'm a Democrat, obviously you can tell. I just, I'm worried about Papa Bluff. I'm worried about myself and my family. Also, my last topic is, and I have a lot of questions, I really don't have the answers. I'm just bringing before you concerns that I'm sharing with other people in Papa Bluff. What is the City of Papa Bluff doing with domestic threats and terrorism? I'm worried that we're going to see things happen after the election because one party won't be happy and feels like they can go ahead and bully. Is that my sign that I'm done?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do I go now or do I listen to you guys?
Well, we don't engage in answers at this moment, but we would be very happy to talk to you after the meeting sometime or I don't know, the City Manager and also the Police Department for the signs. And this happens all the time. I mean, I've put signs up for years and they always get destroyed, so I don't know if there's a whole lot that you can even do about it. It's a common thing. And I don't know if it's boys, men, girls, or who, but that's a tough one. You have to catch them in the act of doing it. But we would be happy to talk with you after the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
I am Kevin Ellis. Live at 2067 Tumbleweed Trail in Papa Bluff, Missouri. And I want to counter piggyback off of what the pastor prayed and what Sonia Ellis spoke about a moment ago, and that's about election. Do we have any plans for election security? Do we have any plans to ensure that when voters go to the polls, they're not worried about someone standing there with a sawed-off shotgun across the street or AR-15? These are intimidation tactics. And I don't think any city, Papa Bluff, small or large, should allow citizens to carry open firearms on polling or election days. We can watch the news and we can see what's happening. We have a president that's talking about, I want my boys to go watch the polling elections. If you want something to go wrong, get a couple of damn fools out there from either side, don't matter which one, right and left, get a couple of fools out there juiced up thinking they can control what's gonna happen, and something's probably gonna happen. And I'm just wanting, is the city doing anything to be prepared to have somebody patrol through? Don't have to have someone stationed there because we probably don't have that many cops. But if they roll through every half an hour or so to make a presence might help in damping down any potential issues. Something we should think about as a city. I was also informed that there was a group of Proud Boys that presented themselves in front of the College Sim a couple of weeks ago, long rifles. Most of us didn't see them. They probably jumped out of the vehicle, stood there for probably 15, 20 minutes and left. Wasn't that many of them. But we have some of these nutcases that are around the area. And I'm not sure whether they're local people or someone coming in from the outside. You're always gonna have agitators and we do know that. But we just, I want to warn the city to be ready and to begin developing a plan. If you haven't developed one, to at least have a presence drive-through or drive-by the polling locations to potentially damp down any potential foolishness from anybody, white, black, doesn't matter what they are, Democrat, Republican. We should be willing to and wanting to respect anyone's right to cast their ballot without having to walk through lines on both sides of someone trying to intimidate them with a shotgun or pistol or rifle. I've got shotguns, I've got pistols, I've got rifles, but they do not belong at polling locations. I should not have to grab my pistol, put it on my hip, and go to my polling location to ensure that me nor my family would be intimidated. I shouldn't have to do that. I shouldn't have to do that. So I'm asking the city to consider what we can do as a city for the next 14 days to, what can we do to damp down any potential issues? Can we consider running newspaper ads, encouraging people to be civil, respect the polling locations, follow the rules, don't bring firearms? Maybe things like that coming from our city and newspaper, radio may go a long way to help head off a potential issue. Something I wish we would consider doing to make sure that everybody is protected. I wouldn't want anyone's mother to go to vote and then there's a phone call and she's headed to the hospital because she's been shot or she's been killed or she's been run over. We have idiots walking around the streets that just might want to be an idiot just because they can. So I wish the city would give some thought to what can we do to begin pre-addressing rather than post-addressing a potential issue when it comes to voting because it's 14 days away and two weeks will be gone before you know it, just like my time. It's gone before you know it. Here comes the bell. Thank you very much for your time.
Just a clarification, the polling places, they are, it's a county issue.
Okay.
So probably need to be talking to the County Commission.
Okay.
On the polling places. You know, the city has very little to do with that.
I understand and I'm probably in agreement with you, but every little bit helps.
Oh, sure it does.
Little bit from the city police, little bit from the county, little bit from this area, every little bit helps. If we all do our part to try to help dampen down what may potentially happen, we can maybe avoid something from happening. But I will be speaking with the county as well.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Oh, Matt, do you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right.
Good to see you.
Anything else before I go? Okay.
Thanks.
Item seven, consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the City Council. If any council member would like an item, to like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered severely, he or she may request to do so. Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve? To accept it?
To make a motion, we approve the consent agenda. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item A, the City Council will discuss the options for live-stream broadcast of the City Council meetings. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we've talked about this for a couple of meetings and I mentioned last time that I asked for a little more time to put something together and kind of what I came up with is Section 110.100 of our city ordinances addresses procedures at our council meetings. It discusses the agenda and the order of the meetings and what I'm proposing is that we add to that section in our codes, basically four new items. The first one being, any citizen speaking before City Council must be addressed appropriately, preferably business casual. Those inappropriately addressed may be denied access to the council. Discretion will be that of the mayor and city council. And that was something that we changed, added to our citizens input sheet a couple of months ago, and so that's just adding that to the ordinances. Number two, an area will be designated within the council chambers for the use of audio and video recording devices by the press and others, which will provide ample position and opportunity to record by audio and video means the official business of the council while in session. Number three, no live broadcasting within the council chambers of its proceedings in whole or in part is allowed. A simultaneous broadcast of the proceedings is available on the internet at YouTube and the same is preserved there for an extended period of time. And then number four, the area designated for the press and others who wish to make audio or video recordings will be designated by the mayor and city and the city clerk will direct persons to the identified area. So that's the, the, kind of the change in the council chamber decorum, if you will, as it relates to the live streaming by amending that section of our city ordinance. I also talked with our IT director about the equipment needed. And I'd mentioned before, the equipment that we use here in the chambers, the TV that's almost black and white and the camera, they're all rather old and ending their useful life or actually past how long they normally last. To replace what we have right now, when it were to fail, just one single piece of it would be $3,500. So to replace all of it's gonna be close to $5,000. The estimates to buy the new equipment that we would need to not only still provide the broadcast to our local cable channel, but also to provide the live stream to, the internet would be about $3,000. So I do want to make that clear that I'm not recommending that we change anything as far as Channel 2 goes. I know there are still a lot of residents that watch Channel 2. I do think we should leave that option available and just add the option of live streaming along with this change to our city ordinances.
That new equipment that you're talking about, does it, will it work with these microphones? Does that all have to be changed too?
No, the microphones will be fine.
That would be just the camera?
Yes.
Television? Okay. So you're talking about the $3,000 or the $5,000? What are we talking about?
To buy what we need to buy to start live streaming, it would be $3,000. But to replace, there's some soundboard, audio mixing stuff and the camera and that those things would be about $5 to replace all of that, so. And if there's someone from the audience that would like to speak, yeah?
I was just gonna say, I know we carry it on Channel 2.
Here, come up, so the folks at home can hear you.
Sorry about that. But in relationship to this, we monitor the, out in dispatch, we have Channel 2 out there and we monitor the City Council. And it sounds like this. So I don't know if the new equipment would improve the sound quality. I don't know if that's something through our cable. We have no idea.
I know that they've been looking into that to try to find out exactly what causes it, because if you go watch the recorded YouTube version?
Yes.
The sound is good.
Is good, but you, you watch the live version out there?
I've heard that, yeah.
We can turn, we can turn the volume all the way up to where, I mean, it'll almost blow you out and you can't, A, hear it or B, understand it. So I don't know if that's a concern, should I say?
I think so.
I didn't know if that was just us or more people had that, but yeah, you can't hear anything like right now. If they're watching it, they have no idea what I'm saying. So I wanted that input in there because, like I said, I didn't know if it improved the quality of sound on the live stream or not, but when we monitor out there, we have no idea what's being said in the City Council. And like I said, when you was talking a while ago, there's a lot of times that we have no idea, so that's my input.
Please state your name and address, or at least your name.
Dave Williams.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that was kind of my question because I've heard people say that about our microphones not being heard. So what would be the advantage of doing this if we, if they can't hear us anyway? So what's the advantage of having another live stream?
On the, on the...
On the YouTube channel, no, you can hear pretty good.
It is, and the Channel 2 stuff, I know that Michael Poirier has been investigating that. They're aware of that and trying to figure out what the problem is, so hopefully...
But it's not how the microphones work with this system. I mean, that's, that was kind of my question. Are we gonna get into this and still have the same problems we already have?
We'll let Michael continue researching before we go buy anything, okay?
All right.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
What is the possibility of doing it through Zoom or meetings? I don't know, it's just an option. Zoom seems to work pretty well when I'm communicating with people across the nation. Fifty, seventy people at a time, you can see their faces, they can see you, you can mute the people you don't want to hear from. I don't know if that's a possibility. I mean, it's, yeah, you can mute them, done.
If I get control of that, maybe, um...
The organizer of the Zoom call could.
I think there's some, I know that as far as open meetings go and allowing input and things like that, I think there's some state regulations and rules about that being done remotely and I don't know all the details. I don't know, Mr. Richardson, if you would like to speak to that or not, but...
Zoom is not recommended at this point in time for any official governmental proceedings, state, local, county, or national. It may get to that, Reverend, but it's a long way from it. There are all kinds of problems that fly in the face of open meetings laws and so forth and so on. And we looked at that briefly as we were trying to make the meetings more transparent and open to the public, but, and it's not us.
Right.
It's just Zoom has a long, long way to go before it'll ever become part of any official governmental activity.
Well, I know that I am a federal employee.
Yes.
And we use Zoom.
No, we use WebEx.
May I finish?
We use that WebEx.
May I finish? And we use Zoom for federal arbitrations. So there is a way that Zoom can be made secure.
Arbitrations are a whole lot different than...
Yeah, right, yeah. So it's, I don't know if they made some improvements to it. I know it used to be kind of blasé a couple of months ago, but I think with everybody making, everybody trying to compete to get that business, I don't know.
It's not a matter of making it, it's a matter of changing the law.
Okay, so...
It's a matter of changing the law.
Okay, so help me understand what part of that law...
I'll give you 30 more seconds.
We were talking about needs to be changed.
State and federal law, not ours.
Okay, okay. So there's something with the state code that has to be changed that would allow something like Zoom to be utilized or a more open forum? Okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the item? Do we have a motion to move this to November 2nd voting session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, the City Council will review bid proposals for auditing services for the City of Papa Bluff and municipal utilities. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kraft, Moss &amp; Tatum Certified Public Accounting has been providing auditing services for the City of Papa Bluff and Municipal Utilities for the past several years. We were notified earlier this year they would no longer be providing municipal auditing services and we've sent out a request for proposals for auditing services. We received three responses to that RFP. BKD of Springfield, Missouri with a bid of $99,000. CLA Connect of St. Louis, Missouri submitted a bid of $83,000. And Busync Hay Row and Stroder LLC of Cape Girardeau submitted a bid of $66,500. City Clerk Nevada Young, Michelle Deacon, Terry Leslie, and myself reviewed these three submittals and also checked references. And based on our review and the references, we were recommending that the city accept the proposal from Busync Hay Row and Stroder LLC to provide auditing services to the city and municipal utilities. Just for reference, 2019 audit that was completed earlier this year was at a cost of $71,522.
There's no other questions, I make the motion. We move this to the voting session. One more second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item C. The City Council will review a cost share agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for Phase 1A of the Highway 67 I-57 project. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a grant agreement for the first section of the upgrading of Highway 67 South. It's a governor's cost share grant in the amount of $2,724,926, which is 50% of the estimated construction cost. The city will match this amount for construction with the Highway 67 sales tax. In addition to the construction costs, the city will also be responsible for our right-of-way acquisition costs, utility relocation, and utility relocation costs that are estimated at $2.92, $2,996,000. In addition to the grant, MoDOT will also be responsible for right-of-way administrative expenses, preliminary engineering services, and construction engineering services estimated
Looks like we're on our way.
We're on the way, yes, sir.
I make a motion. This is moved to the voting session. November 2nd.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item D. The City Council will review a cost share agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for Phase 2 of the Highway 67 I-57 project. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is another cost share agreement for the Highway 67 South improvement. This is for Phase 2 of the project that will improve approximately two miles of Highway 67 from County Road 338 to County Road 352. The total estimated cost of this section of improvements is $13,736,426, and the grant award is for half of that, or $6,868,213, with the city's commitment being the same amount. The total project and agreement will include preliminary engineering, right-of-way administration expenses, and acquisition, utility relocation, environmental reviews, construction engineering, and construction.
Any further discussion on it? I think it's a good idea.
I make a motion. We move that to November 2nd voting session.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item E. The City Council will consider the designation from an appointment to the HVACR Board.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We have a member that is resigning, and another member that is asked to be appointed to this board. The HVAC board is recommending these changes.
Make a motion to move this to the voting session. November 2nd.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item F. The City Council will consider a zoning designation recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission for the proposed annexation of 145 Midnight Lane.
I'll make a motion. We move this to the November 2nd voting session. Go ahead.
Did you need to discuss anything else?
Nope. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item G. The City Council will consider a request to solicit proposals for a real estate broker to assist with the sale of its own property located along the south and west of Shelby Road. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, the property south and west of Shelby Road is excess property that we're not going to be using, and I'm asking that we send out a request for proposals for a real estate broker to market this property for sale. Of course, we will have to take sealed bids for this property, so this would just be the first step in that process. If we're allowed to send out requests for proposals, you would then vote on the acceptance of whichever proposal was submitted that was scored the highest, and then that broker would then develop a marketing plan and market the property with a sealed bid date that you had set.
How much property?
It's about 30 acres. I mean, that would definitely be part of the process as the broker works through it to come up with the exact acreage that's over there.
Any further discussion on it?
So in speaking with Counselor Richardson, all that would be needed tonight would be just a voice vote of your approval to move forward with this, and then, like I said, once these proposals are submitted, I would bring that back to you, and then that would go through the normal process of a resolution to actually enter into a contract and hire a broker. So tonight, all we would need is a voice vote on this. So it would just somebody make a motion, and then...
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Item H. The City Council will review proposals for administrative services regarding the CDVG MIT grant application for a generator. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've talked about these different grants at two or three different meetings as we're going through this process, and this is the next to the last step before we submit it. Community Development Block Grant requires us to solicit for administrative services. We solicited, we received one proposal back, and that proposal was from the Ozark-Foothills Regional Planning Commission. Their particular fees for project administration for this particular project, for the purchasing of a new generator, is $4,400. Those fees would be paid entirely by grant funds if the grant was awarded. This is, these actually are due Friday in Jefferson City, so I am asking that you workshop and vote this item tonight.
Any further discussion?
Motion move this to the ninth voting session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item I. The City Council will review proposals for administrative services regarding the CDVG MIT grant application for Roxy Road Bridge Replacement. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this is the same program. This particular application is for the, as he mentioned, the replacement of the bridge on Roxy Road. Again, Ozark-Foothills Regional Planning Commission was the only firm that submitted a proposal. Their project administration fees for this project are $34,332, and again, it's, if the grant was awarded, all those fees would be paid by the grant funds, and I'm asking also that this be workedshopping voted tonight.
I'll make a motion. We move this to tonight's voting session.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item K. The City Council will review proposals for administrative services regarding the CDVG MIT grant application for stormwater improvements.
I just recorded myself and just played it three times in a row, I guess. This one is for, like he said, the stormwater improvement application, and again, Ozark-Foothills Regional Planning Commission was the only firm to submit a proposal. Their project administration fees for this proposal are $39,746, and I am asking that this also be workshopped and voted tonight.
Motion move this to the ninth voting session.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item N. Action Required Items. AA, Bill Number 8263. The City Council will take action on an ordinance for an amendsatory agreement between the City of Poplar Bluff and Southwestern Power Administration.
Motion for first reading of Bill Number 8263.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an amendsatory agreement between the City of Poplar Bluff and the Southwestern Power Administration relative to ownership, maintenance, and replacement of certain equipment located in the Poplar Bluff Substation.
Motion for second reading, Bill Number 8263.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an amendsatory agreement between the City of Poplar Bluff and the Southwestern Power Administration relative to ownership, maintenance, and replacement of certain equipment located in the Poplar Bluff Substation.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Bill Number 8263 is adopted. Item BB, Bill Number 8264. The City Council will take action on an ordinance for an amendment to the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission State Block Grant for the Airport Improvement Project Number 20-075A-1.
Motion for the first reading of Bill Number 8264.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to an agreement between the City of Poplar Bluff and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission relative to a federal airport improvement program grant.
Motion for second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to an agreement between the City of Poplar Bluff and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission relative to a federal airport improvement program grant.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Bill Number 8264 is adopted. Item CC, Bill Number 8265. The City Council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Solocom Technologies Incorporated relative to an upgraded 911 system.
Motion for first reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Poplar Bluff, excuse me, Poplar Bluff, and Comtech Solocom Technologies Incorporated relative to an upgraded 911 system.
Motion for second reading of Bill Number 8265.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Poplar Bluff and Comtech Solocom Technologies Incorporated relative to an upgraded 911 system.
Motion for adoption. Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Bill Number 8265 is adopted. Item DD, Bill Number 8266. The City Council will take action on an ordinance selecting administrative services relative to the CDVG MIT grant application for a generator.
Motion for first reading of Bill Number 8266.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance selecting a consultant for the delivery of administrative services relative to the CDVG MIT grant application for the acquisition of a generator, and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for said services.
Motion for the second reading of Bill Number 8266.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance selecting a consultant for the delivery of administrative services relative to the CDVG MIT grant application for the acquisition of a generator, and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for said services.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Bill Number 8266 is adopted. Item EE, Bill Number 8267. The City Council will take action on an ordinance selecting administrative services relative to the CDVG MIT grant application for the Roxy Road Bridge Replacement.
Motion for first reading, Bill Number 8267.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance selecting a consultant for the delivery of administrative services relative to a CDVG MIT grant application for a Roxy Road Bridge Replacement, and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for said services.
Motion for second reading of Bill Number 8267.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance selecting a consultant for the delivery of administrative services relative to a CDVG MIT grant application for a Roxy Road Bridge Replacement. for a Roxy Road Bridge Replacement and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for said services.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Bill number eight-two-six-seven is adopted. Item FF. Bill number eight-two-six-eight. The city council will take action on an ordinance selecting administrative services relative to the CDVG MIT grant application for stormwater improvements.
Motion for the first reading of Bill number eight-two-six-eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance selecting a consultant for the delivery of administrative services relative to the CDVG MIT grant application for various stormwater improvement projects in the city of Poplar Bluff and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for said services.
Motion for second reading of Bill number eight-two-six-eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance selecting a consultant for the delivery of administrative services relative to the CDVG MIT grant application for various stormwater improvement projects in Poplar Bluff and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for said services.
Motion for adoption of Bill number eight-two-six-eight.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Bill number eight-two-six-eight is adopted. Item ten, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. October the tenth, we had Buff Up the Bluff. Had a pretty successful day that day, ended up filling about twenty-two dumpsters. Just like to recognize and thank a few people and a few groups. R S V P group, they provided volunteers Monday through Thursday of that week that answered the phones for the senior citizens that called in to have a curbside pickup. We ended up with about a hundred and sixty senior citizens that took advantage of that. That particular day, the day of the, of the Buff Up the Bluff, those hundred and sixty households, well, not all of them, but a lot of those hundred and sixty households got picked up by volunteers that day. Just like to thank a few of those folks. Butch Anderson, Ed DeGaris, his grandson Ashton DeGaris, Ross DeGaris, the O F R P C, Ozark Foothills Regional Planning Commission also sent a crew that worked that day doing curbside pickup. We had five community service workers that assisted with that also. The street department was there on site, keeping everything running smoothly and also spent at least Monday and Tuesday and maybe even Wednesday morning finishing up the one hundred and sixty households worth of senior citizen stuff that was picked up. Republic Trash Services that provided the dumpsters. It's always a good event, we're glad we could offer it again this year. We end up getting a lot of stuff out of people's homes and yards that might end up elsewhere, so glad to be a part of that again this year. The other thing I wanted to mention is Halloween is coming up and the Chamber of Commerce, the Parks Department, and downtown Poplar Bluff, Inc. have gotten together and got some events planned for Christmas, or Christmas. I'm getting ahead of myself. It's so cold today, I was a little skipped the whole season. Anyway, for Halloween, the first thing is they're doing a trunk or treating in the Coliseum parking lot from three to five on Halloween. There's also a dog, a dog costume contest at the, at the dog park. The Historic Rogers Theater is hosting a free movie night that night. They're also doing paranormal tours at the Rogers Theater that evening. So some fun events going on for Halloween, so. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
A few weeks ago, I had a, I guess, like an open forum kind of meeting for the Ward One. And during that meeting, there were some concerns the citizens made about lighting, lights being out, you know, down on the south end of town and maybe not enough police presence. I just want to thank the police department because I've had people in that ward contacting me and letting me know that they've seen more of a presence there. And for municipal utilities, they've replaced some lighting and a lot of good things going on, so. A lot of good things have come out of that meeting.
Glad to hear that, sounds good. Is there any further business that we need to discuss before the council tonight? If there be none, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion we adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn.